Today is Monday, June 3rd, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Garcia, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walters here. Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson did call in sick this evening. Councilmember Neal called in sick this evening. Councilmember Bucialata called in sick this evening. Jose Maldonado?
Here.
And Councilmember Kathy Adams?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We'll go ahead and open our first call to the public. I do have a request to speak from Mr. Stephen Evans.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll be probably not three minutes brief, but you know how I roll. Around the first of the year, I was here and I discussed something that I used to do and on a volunteer basis. And I got involved in the Florence Make a Difference Day, and it kind of sparked a flame inside of me. And then after a few conversations with a few other people who approached me at the end of that day, it kind of spurred me to move forward with my idea. So I came here, I mentioned what I was planning on doing, got some good information from the council, and got some real positive feedback as far as maybe getting some help if and when needed. At the time, I didn't think I would because I really never did before because it was all kind of small stuff. But since about April, I think I was contacted around the first time, helped out a family, went great. Since then, I've run into a few other people on my own. So I've logged about 40 hours total since about April, first week of April, just doing like anywhere from two to four hours on a Saturday. So it's been a few Saturdays. But I was contacted recently about a woman that needed some help. So after the little project I did Saturday for a different family, I went out, met with her, and as soon as I hit the property, I realized, okay, this one's probably out of my scope from size, not ability, just sheer size. So I kind of thought even before I met her that I was going to have to say no, but the more I spoke with her, and I have certain questions that I ask everybody that help me determine whether I'm going to take it on or not because this is 100% free, zero. I couldn't walk away and tell her no. I told her I'd be back in touch with her, that had to work out a few things, and the first thing that came into my mind was, all I need is help on this one. How do I find it? So I went home and was talking to my wife about it, and she said, well, why don't you talk to the council? They have a meeting Monday night. I'm like, I don't think I can do that because it's not in the town. It's in the county. It's out up by Cactus Forest. So the more I thought about it, I thought, what the heck, it's worth a shot. I want to figure, and I'll figure it out, one way or the other, I'll get it done. But so I'm here asking for help. If there's anybody in front of me or behind me that thinks they might be able to give a few hours on a Saturday labor, let me know. I'll be more than happy to take your information. And I've got to take off pretty quick, so if I could leave my card?
So I appreciate you coming and speaking tonight. And so your contact information is with our town clerk, Ms. Lisa Garcia. So if there's anybody in the audience, any of us, anybody who's watching right now, please reach out to Stephen Evans. It was really nice. We got to connect before the meeting and at Make a Difference Day. So and I just love the idea and the fact that Make a Difference Day is carried on from the actual day. It's always been a goal to make it continue forward. I see Sophie in the audience is shaking her head, so I am pretty confident we will be able to pull together some amazing resources within our community to all come together. This fire season is going to be no joke, and everybody who can pitch in and help and even prevent, as well as the cleanup aspect, I admire that. So thank you. And Paul King oversees the community services, so he's a good point of contact as well.
Is that a term of access?
Yes, sir.
Back through, sir.
Thank you. And is there anybody else, either in the audience or online, that would like to speak at this time? There will be a second call to the public, and I'll close the first call to the public at this time. Item 6A, we have a volunteer recognition for Adopt a Flower Box program, and at this time, I'll call up Ms. Allison, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. We would just like to take this opportunity to show some appreciation and thank our Adopt a Flower Box participants. I know we have David Lewis and Jamie Lewis in attendance this evening, as well as Ms. Victoria Knight, if I could ask them to come forward. And if we do have any other Adopt a Flower Box participants here this evening, please come forward at this time as well. We just wanted to show them a small token of appreciation, so we made them some certificates. They contributed tremendously to the beautification of our historic downtown. We had the Geo Group, Kaitlin Johnson, Kelly Williams, Shelley Byrd, Michael Groves, Victoria Knight, Jessica Moran, Ariana Tamaio, Pecus Beebe, the Bastillos family, Susan Riley, Peyton's Hidden Treasures, as I mentioned, David and Jamie Lewis, Megan Wright, and Melissa Campbell, who are all contributing to the flower boxes along Main Street. And years previous, we had other participants as well. But moving forward, that program is going to be maintained by our parks maintenance staff so that we can have some consistency in those boxes. But at this time, if you guys would like to take a picture with them and present them with their certificates, I'd appreciate that.
So would you guys like to say a few words because you have put a lot of hard work and effort into beautifying our downtown, and I want to say thank you on behalf of our
I didn't even know what to expect when we first started doing this. It was just put some plants in there, do something for the parade, and then I got my kid involved, and it just became a thing. And I was quite upset because my plant is growing incredibly, and I've cut it down and donated it out to people who wanted it. But it was fun. It was really, really fun, coming up with different stuff every season or parade or whatever, so I'm thankful for that. So it was, it was great. So I thank you guys for letting us, letting us do that.
Yeah, same thing, talking on Vicky. It's been fun. It's been, we've been doing it since it started about three years ago. We've decorated it, made custom Santa slays to go around the box. It's been a lot of fun. I'm going to teach you, and so all my students, hey, Lewis, I saw your box today. It looks good, or you got trash in it, you need to clean it. But it's been really fun. Thank you for the opportunity to help, let us help with the town and help make the town what we see it as it is.
I love that. Item 6B is our public hearing on Resolution Number 190124. This is up for discussion, approval, disapproval regarding resolution of the town of Florence-Pennell County approving the conditional use permit for a drive-through facility at 961 South Main Street, Assessor Parcel Number 20204036A, with recommended conditions. Ms. Benitez.
Which one?
This one.
This one? Let's get all that out of your way.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Tonight is the public hearing for the conditional use permit at 961 South Main Street. This was approval, no, the CUP was requested by Tas, oh lordy, Tas Cotry Studios. It's just for a drive-through. Thank you. Currently, the existing zoning of this parcel is neighborhood business or B1, which is the second highest commercial zoning that we have within our development code. Here we have the initial site plan that they've turned in that shows where the building was located, as well as how that drive-through plans to run through the lot. This parcel was originally two separate pieces of land, but then they went through the process to combine it, and now it is one whole parcel. Currently in our development code, a restaurant with a drive-through within the B1 zoning district does require a conditional use permit, and that is why we're taking it through the process. Something we must take in consideration when processing one of these CUPs is what zonings and what businesses are around it. Does what they propose become compatible with what's already there? Now, to the north of this lot is a neighborhood business or B1. However, its current use is, has a single-family residence on it. To the east is single-family residential, and that's where some of the neighborhoods begin, so there is also single-family residential places to the east. So the south is the Jalapenos Restaurant. That is also zone neighborhood business B1. It has a drive-through and it is a similar use. To the west is the high school. I do not know why the land use is rural agriculture, but we understand the use is for the school. And then, of course, onsite is that B1. We found that what's there to the north and south, it may not be compatible with a single-family residential, however, it is compatible with to the south. And something to help kind of mitigate that view or it being there is we'll have walls on those areas to the east and to the north in order to barrier off the look from those With that barrier in place, the proposed drive-through restaurant should not have a negative impact on those surrounding properties. The six-foot walls should be onsite and access is at buffer. The business will also be located at the other Jalapenos business, which also has the drive-through. In the Planning and Zoning Commission, we did have a public hearing there. There was excitement for a new business, but there was also concerns about the crossing there, as well as how traffic would flow in terms of the drive-through. Something I will add is that the drive-through itself is 277 linear feet, which is well within the required 100 linear feet that is within our code. At this time, the building itself is a shell. There's no specific restaurant or business that is looking to go in it right now, but they are looking for some form of food service. They are looking to have a seating outside in a shell building of 1,000 square feet for the actual building. There is no public, the building itself is not open to the public, so there won't be public restrooms, and there'll only be a restroom for the employees. This type of business is a quick service anyway, so people should be moving through and moving out. I mentioned that the building itself is only for the employees because something that does impact the parking is the seating and what's open to the public. So we base the parking on the outside seating. We also include additional three spaces in order to account for the employees that'll be working there. We do have the representatives of the project here to answer any questions, and I'll call them up now. And with that, does the council have any questions? Or do we want to do the public hearing first?
Opening up the public hearing, I do recall Ms. Garcia's this item, you wanted to read into the record a statement from Ms. Bucialata?
Yes. Councilmember Bucialata could not be here tonight, but she wanted to express her concern to council with regards to the drive-through. She asked for the council to take deep consideration and deep thought into the process in making sure that it's safe for those that need to go to the high school, as well as drivers in the community, taking into consideration both traffic flows and walkers.
Thank you. And the public hearing is open, but we also have the speaker and presenter here, so I'm just having a nice delicate balance. If you would like to begin your presentation, ma'am?
I don't have a presentation relying here on Maricela, but I'm here to answer questions.
Okay, so. Let me give you this back, I'm so sorry. My computer crashed, so Vice Mayor and I are sharing, and I just needed to look up a note that I had made regarding this agenda item. Councilmember Adams, would you like to begin?
Well, I did have a comment, and I know that Ms. Maricela did say it, but it wasn't in the notes for this tonight. I spoke at the Planning and Zoning Meeting as a resident. I am not a, on the commission anymore. But I walk that road every single day, and I'm very concerned about the high school and the crosswalk being right there. We already have Jalapenos Restaurant, and if you're walking south, the kids, it's very dicey when motorists are coming out the exit of Jalapenos because it's a blind driveway. And if they don't happen to be paying attention, and not to disparage our high schoolers, but they have earphones on, they have the crisis of the moment, and they are not watching necessarily. So I don't, I think the fact that we have seven curb cuts on that block where the kids cross is very dangerous, and adding a second drive-through, what was told to us, and I know that you haven't identified yet the type of business, but if it is a coffee shop, right, that's very different than a food restaurant. And I think when we wrote our expectations, we didn't know about a phenomenon called Dutch Bros, right? And if you've ever seen those drive-throughs, they are packed. So I get it, we have a lot of room right now for a normal, maybe Dunkin' Donuts, but should we get a Starbucks or a Dutch Bros? I think that traffic can back up onto Main Street. So it's a concern, and I'd rather address it now than have any issues with the children. And so my concern is that, my guess is, the traffic coming south will be ameliorated somewhat by the circles, and I think that's a good thing because right now, those trucks coming in from Tucson are barreling down Main Street. This is going to slow them up a bit. But my question is, is the traffic mostly going to come from the south, go get their coffee, and continue on south, and not come out of there and try to cross into a suicide lane and make a left, right? So that's one of my questions. Then also, I have a question on if it is, whatever type of business it is, how much traffic are you expecting, right? So if it's a nominal traffic flow, it's not as big of an impact, but I think if it's a coffee shop, that's exactly the time the kids are going to school.
So I'm going to tag along because it goes in line with some of the notes that I had. The type of business, when we're talking about conditional use permits, for me, it matters specifically to know what type of business is going to go into it, not just the zoning, because as Councilmember Adams stated, you know, there's a difference between, say, a Salad and Go and a Dutch Brothers. So Dutch Brothers, you're going to have people far and wide, especially our high school kids, traffic is going to get backed up. We know what that pattern looks like because we can look at other areas where they have those businesses and establish that pattern. Whereas when you have, for example, like the Salad and Go, you know that they're going to be limited at certain points of the day, and it's kind of an in and out, and it doesn't really impact the drive-through pattern that much. I do have the same concern noted with what can we do? Has the Planning and Zoning looked at, how can we increase safety? Because there is a lot of children crossing at that time, as well as you have drivers, and some of these drivers are brand-new to the road, and now we're going to put them in the mix with other drivers that are coming in and, you know, increasing the traffic flow in that specific area in town. And then my third and final point, as we're talking about beautification for the town and murals, if this project does end up going forward with the walls, is part of the development agreement that we can talk about, bringing in some type of beautification and like murals of that nature? You can go ahead.
Are those questions or just points?
They were just points unless you have any type of response already set for those.
No.
Okay. Councilmember Maldonado, do you have anything else to add?
So you would, my concern is, like the mayor just said, if it's going to be, it'd be nice to know what's going to go in there because now would be the time, if you had the ability to put two drive-through lanes, if there was enough space, where it would alleviate some of that, that traffic flow versus not knowing and just putting one lane in. And the other thing is, would it be feasible to have like either a right turn only as you're leaving as part of the safety aspect of it? Because I've been to some places where you're only allowed to turn right, and that also might alleviate some of the, the traffic woes and, and safety factors.
Vice Mayor, do you have anything to add?
You just covered just about everything. The only thing I see is the crosswalk area that's printed on your map. Your kids are coming from the south. More than likely, they're going to cross right in the path of traffic of those drive-through lanes, so you might want to check the other area of, or make your walkway lines coming from the south instead of the north, only because that's where most of your kids are going to come from if, if they're going to visit that establishment.
So our public hearing is open. If there's anybody in the audience or online, just go ahead and raise your hand or raise your digital hand if you have anything that you'd like to add. All right. Absolutely. She's more than welcome to come up and speak. I really want to say thank you for being here this evening.
It was a pretty drive from Phoenix.
Oh, very nice.
So I just wanted to let you know that it's not going to be a Dutch Brothers because the site is too small. It's, it just doesn't work for that business, and the developer is looking to have like a local coffee shop in there. That's what they would prefer. And the developer is more than happy to beautify the building with a mural or whatever is needed. And then also, we're definitely willing to look at like a pork chop or something. I just learned that term pork chop from a traffic engineer, but from in the driveway where it is right turn only, that would be no, no problem, and we definitely want to make this as safe as possible for the children and the people who are going to be using it.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion unless there's more discussion.
Anybody from the audience? All right, Ms. Adams, if you would like to make a motion, I'm going to close the public hearing.
First of all, I, I, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Are you making a motion, or do you want me to keep the public hearing open?
No, I was making a motion on the item.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and go ahead.
Okay. First, I'd like to say that this is very welcome. I am very positive about it. And what I'm trying to do is get us, the town and P&amp;Z, to get out in front of the traffic planning. Every single item that's come before P&amp;Z for a year has gotten bogged down on the traffic issues, right? Because we all understand our infrastructure is bursting at the seams. So my feeling is, we need to do a little bit more homework before you get this far, but it's a very good project. It's good for our town. I'm glad to hear that it definitely isn't a Dutch Brothers because that is a problem, right? So the motion I would like to make is this, I would like to table this. I would like the town to do the traffic study and come back and work with you on if it can be a right-hand turn only and what that means, because if people do want to go left, does it impact somebody further south on Main Street? So my request or my motion would be to table it and come back with a joint traffic plan with the town and you on how we can better ensure the safety of the kids.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed? And motion carries? And I saw you nod your head yes, so we're looking forward to continuing to work with you on this endeavor. Thank you, and I appreciate you being here, we all do. Item C is a public hearing on Ordinance Number 737-24. This is an ordinance of the town of Florence-Pennell County, Arizona, levying the assessed evaluation of the property within the town of Florence, subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for general municipal expanses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2025. Mr. Carl Duddy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is a first reading and a public hearing regarding primary property tax levy for fiscal year 2025. Primary property taxes go directly into the general fund, and as you know, the general fund is our operating, day-to-day operating account for community services, community development, public safety, and town administration operations. The levy rate for FY 2024 is .999 per $100 of net assessed value, generating $1,386,500. The proposed levy tax rate for FY 2025 is 1.0289 per $100 of net assessed value, generating revenue of $1,546,284. This is an increase of 183, excuse me, increase of $113,149, or 8.16 excluding new construction. The proposed tax- The proposed tax levy on a $100,000 home would be $102.89, an increase of $7.76 from last year. We will bring this item back to council on June 17th for a second reading and possible adoption.
All right. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing regarding ordinance number 737-24. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak? Counsel, any comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Dudding.
Thank you.
Closing the public hearing. Item D is our public hearing on ordinance number 740-24. This is an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the street lighting improvement districts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 evaluation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for streetlight operations for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2025. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Town of Florence has nine active streetlight districts. For fiscal year 2025, we are placing levies on eight districts. Streetlight District Number Four in Anthem has ample funding to cover electrical costs for the fiscal year. These levies, um, are levied to cover electrical cost only. And Streetlight District Number One in Anthem, we have a levy of $33,509. District Two in Anthem, levy of $18,100. District Three in Anthem, a levy of $29,569. District Five in Anthem, $368. District Six at Muskeet Trails, $137. District Seven at Sunrise Estates Phase Two, $14,587. District Eight at Bisbee Ranch, $1,501. And District Nine at Western Crossing has a levy of $411. This item is a first reading and a public hearing only. We will bring this item back on June 17th for adoption.
Thank you for that presentation. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak to this item at this time? Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item at this time? This item will be coming back before us, as Mr. Dudding stated, on June 17th, 2024. If anything should arise between now and then, please reach out, or you may speak at that meeting as well. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Item E is our public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the proposed final budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Thank you, Mayor. The FY 2025 tentative budget was adopted by council on May 6th. There have been no changes from the tentative budget to the final budget presented before you tonight. As required by law, we have advertised the tentative budget in the local newspaper, posted it on the town website, and made it available for public review at the public library, fire station number two, and town hall. The final budget for FY 2025 is $97,181,410. The expenditure limitation is $62,575,341.
All right, I am going to open up the public hearing at this time to receive citizens' comments. Is there any citizen in the audience or online that would like to speak at this time? Any member of our council? Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to thank the finance, because you guys did an outstanding job, uh, getting all this information, so thank you guys for your hard work.
Appreciate it.
All right, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and move on to item seven, which is discussion, approval, disapproval of resolution number 1896-24. This is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Mayor, I need you to adjourn into a special meeting first. It's part of the statutes that we adopted in a special meeting.
Correct, I was reading there and not here. So, at this time, we need a motion to adjourn to a special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are now in a special meeting, and moving into item A, regarding discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number 1896-24. Again, this is the resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2425. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Uh, Mayor, as you know, Ms. Jimenez is not here tonight. Um, the only thing I wanted to add, um, is to thank the, uh, executive team here, putting the budget together, um, takes everybody input, and it's about a four-month, um, process, and, uh, the entire team deserves the credit that the vice mayor thanked for. So, that's all I had.
Well, I wanna say thank you, and a very heartwarming thank you to our finance department and our whole administrative team. We recently, I'm going to announce it, because in the letter, I, I know that our finance director, Ms. Rebecca Jimenez, we love her as Becky, has retired, this time for real. And Carl, I know that you have been very instrumental, you've been Becky's right-hand person throughout this entire process, so thank you for that. And you guys worked really hard, very transparent, and it was a wonderful budget session to be a part of.
Thank you.
With that, we need to have a roll call vote, so I'm gonna ask for a motion and a second to be made, and then Ms. Garcia will call on us, and we'll each say yea or nay. So, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve resolution number 1896-24, resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2024, 25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Garcia, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Vice Mayor Mendoza? Councilmember Maldonado?
Yeah.
Councilmember Adam?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
It is four, four to zero, we have a, uh, approval.
Thank you very much. At this time, we need a motion to adjourn from the special meeting of the mayor and town council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This is a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the property tax levy of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, ordinance number MRCFD-1, 121-24. This is an ordinance of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Penale County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Community Facilities District, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of the valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for the community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2025. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Merrill Ranch CFD has two levies. Uh, the first levy covers debt service payments for regional improvements. The second levy is to cover ongoing operation and maintenance of the district. The levy rate for debt service is capped at 3.25, and the admin levy rate is capped at .3 per year. For fiscal year 2025, the debt service levy is 1.50 per $100 of net assessed value. This will generate $729,582.61. The admin levy rate is .3 per, .30 per $100 of net assessed value, and will generate $145,916.32. The combined levy rate for Merrill Ranch CFD One is 1.80 per $100 of net assessed value. The combined revenue for both levies is $875,497.93. This is the first reading and a public hearing only. We will bring this back on June 17th for adoption.
At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in person or online that would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand at this time. Counsel? All right, seeing none, this will come back again on June 17th, as Mr. Dudding said. If there's any questions before then, please don't hesitate to reach out or attend that meeting. Item B is a, um, closing that public hearing. Moving on to item B, public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the proposed final budget for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, and possible adoption of resolution number MRCFD-1, 149-24. This is a resolution of the Board of Directors of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, Florence, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2425. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. The final budget for Merrill Ranch CFD Number One is set at $11,384,763. This amount covers all capital improvements, debt service, and administrative costs for fiscal year 2025. All required public notifications have been satisfied. As, uh, the chairman said, this is a public hearing and a request for adoption.
All right, at this time, I'm opening the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak at this time or online, please go ahead and raise your hand. Anybody on council? All right, Carl, I think this means we did our job really well during the preseason of the budget. Um, so, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and... This is open for possible adoption, so at this time, we do need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number MRCFD-1, 149-24.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not motion carries. Item C is discussion and possible approval of the March 18th, 2024 minutes of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. Ms. Garcia?
Minutes are in your packet and presented for adoption.
Counsel, any questions or concerns noted?
I have a procedural question, since I wasn't a member of council, am I not voting now?
Um, you can still vote on it, based on the fact that other people have read them and have confirmed that they're...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent question. All right, seeing no questions, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the March 18th, 2024 minutes for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We need a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Facilities District Number One.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, we need a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item A is a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the property tax levy of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, ordinance number MRCFD-2, 221-24. This is an ordinance of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Penale County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the Community Facilities District, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2025. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, like Merrill Ranch CFD Number One, Merrill Ranch CFD Two has the same two levies with the same maximum rates, 3.25 for debt service and .3 for operations and administration. For fiscal year 2025, the debt service levy rate is 2.4106 per $100 of net assessed value. This will generate approximately $921,572.61. The admin rate is set at .30 per $100 of net assessed value. This will generate $114,699. The combined levy rate for Merrill Ranch CFD Number Two is 2.7106 per $100 of net assessed value. The combined revenue for both levies is $1,036,261.70. This is the first reading and a public hearing only. Staff will bring this back on June 17th for adoption.
At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there's any member of the public or at participating online, please go ahead and motion now. Any member of the council? All right. This is just the first reading, and it will be coming back again before us on June 17th, so if there's anything between now and then, please feel free to let us know and speak at that meeting. Closing the first public hearing, and moving on to item B, which is a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the proposed final budget for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, and possible adoption of resolution number MRCFD-2, 249-24. This is a resolution of the Board of Directors of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Florence, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2425. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, the final budget for Merrill Ranch CFD Number Two is set at $4,43,753. This amount covers all capital improvements, debt service, administrative costs for 2025. All required public notifications have been satisfied. As chairman said, this is a public hearing and a request for adoption.
At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there's any member of the audience, either in person or online, that would like to speak at this time, please go ahead and make a motion. Any member of council? Again, excellent job during the pre-planning budget sessions. And this is up for motion, so at this time, I need a motion.
Mayor, can you close the meeting first?
Closing the public hearing? Request for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number MRCFD-249-24.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Item C is discussion and possible approval of the January 2nd, 2024 minutes of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. Ms. Lisa Garcia?
Minutes are included in the packet and up for a motion for adoption.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the January 2nd, 2024 minutes for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 13 is our consent agenda, and all items on the consent agenda will be...
Mayor, I need item 12.
Oh, make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Put a check mark, as if it happens. Item 13, consent, all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of community development block grant program cooperation and coordination agreement with Penale County, Ms. Jennifer Evans. Item B is acceptance of block safety assignment amendment, Mr. Chief Bruce Walz. Item C is removal of Jasmine Cortez from the Florence Teen Council, Ms. Garcia. Item D is approval of the April 22nd, May 6th, and May 8th, 2024 town council minutes. Item E is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes, Ms. Garcia. First, the Historic District Advisory Commission meeting minutes of January 31st, February 28th, and March 27th, 2024. Second, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes of March 7th, 2024. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there any member of the public or council that would like any item? Is there any member of the public or council that would like any item removed at this time? Seeing none, we need a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to call item number thirteen, E, I, HDEC minutes for January only.
Okay. Can I please have a motion approving the consent agenda with the removal of item E, I, only at this time?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Councilmember Adam?
Yes, so on the HDEC meeting minutes of January thirty-first, specifically for three twenty-five North Main Street, I just have a comment. It says in the notes here that the owners of three twenty-five North Main applied to HDEC to refrain from replacing an existing awning, which was badly deteriorated. I understand that. However, it also states the building owners expressed a newfound appreciation for the aesthetic of the building frontage without the awning. I would question their expertise in historic preservation. I don't know if it was known at the time, but we've had a shippo, a noted architect, walk our streets. Those awnings are critical, significant architectural details to our town, including the angle at which they were built. And the fact that that awning was there is an important detail that should not be dismissed on the basis of the owner feeling the aesthetics looked better. I question putting shades on to replace that. I question that shade is not an issue because the building next to it doesn't have an awning. If you walk our streets even now, and we're not at a hundred and ten degrees yet, every awning is important. And that side of the street gets the afternoon sun. So awnings are very important. That's a comment. It's under the bridge now because it was approved. But I would ask that HDEC be a little more diligent before letting owners make a decision on an architectural detail. Thank you.
Mayor, a member of council, the clerk's office will be happy to put that in a letter back and submit to them on council's behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Adam, would you like to make a motion now for item E, I? Or E one?
I'll make a motion that we approve item number thirteen, E, I, January thirty-first, HDEC minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries. Item fourteen is our new business, which brings us to item A, resolution number nineteen oh two dash twenty-four. This is discussion, approval, disapproval of the resolution of the Town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, approving the replat of the final plat for Merrill Ranch Unit Fifty-nine C. This is PZ twenty-four dash eighteen, Ms. Maricela Benitez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We bring before you a replat for a final plat of Merrill Ranch Unit Fifty-nine C. We bring it before you because the pulte and the engineers working for them have decided to add ten new single-family residential lots to this unit. Originally, there was seventy-six lots there. And now that they've added ten, there will now be eighty-six. Besides the addition of the lots, nothing else really changed except the amount of some of the open space. But it still meets our fifty percent requirement set up by the PUD and our code. Just to give you an idea of what that means in terms of the plat itself, the plat on the left shows the original tract A taking up almost more than half of that area. And then with the addition of your ten new lots, you've got your thirty-seventh, thirty-eight, forty-one, forty, thirty-nine, and those other ten lots in the south of that area. That itself does not upset really the balance of the Anthem and Merrill Ranch requirements in terms of dwelling units per acre, as well as what's required per unit. We do have the engineer here for any questions, but we did want to bring this back to council itself just to show that these ten new lots were being added. It is minimal in terms of what could be added. Are there any questions?
I don't see any questions. If the developer would like to speak, you're welcome to. I do appreciate when you take the time and come out. If not, that's okay as well. We would just need a motion.
Motion with resolution number nineteen oh two dash twenty-four.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries. Item B is resolution number nineteen oh three dash twenty-four. This is discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, approving a replat of the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Fifty-eight, planning and zoning twenty-four nineteen, Ms. Benitez.
This is similar in the replat that came before. However, the difference is for Anthem at Merrill Ranch Unit Fifty-eight, they are looking to move the open space tract over, as well as remove one lot. We wanted to bring this to town council and the public just to have that transparency of this is what the new plat is going to look like. So the original number of lots was a hundred and twenty-three units. Now the total number is a hundred and twenty-two. Otherwise, nothing else has really changed in this plat. To give an idea of what that looks like, you have in this circle right here, you've got ninety-one, ninety, and then there is tract D. And the new plat, tract D is moved over and it moves through into the next tract across the street. You've lost or ninety-one's been moved over and ninety's over here, but you've lost a lot within here. And that's, like I said, we have the representative here and that was just to help with some of that drainage and then move the lot so they have a little bit better feel, engineering terms. Any questions?
Appreciate that. Any questions, counsel? With that, we need a motion.
Motion with resolution number nineteen oh three dash twenty-four.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C is discussion, approval, disapproval of the preliminary plat for Florence two-eighty-seven planned unit development with recommended stipulations. This is planning and zoning twenty-two dash forty-six, Ms. Benitez.
So Florence two-eighty-seven, the PUD or the planned unit development was approved in a previous town council meeting. They have brought forward their first phase of that PUD. It is development unit one. Today, we have the preliminary plat because of new code amendments we've made. The preliminary plat must come through Planning and Zoning Commission and Town Council. Before I have the representatives come and do their presentation, I just wanted to say that the preliminary plat met the standards set by the PUD. The roadway improvements will need to take place in order for the development to move forward overall and reduce the traffic impact on the area. The item does not require a public hearing because it is just a preliminary plat and our code states that no public hearing is required. The plat went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on May sixteenth and they forwarded a recommendation of approval with the listed conditions, which are found within the RCA. The commissioners did ask about the level of service for the roadways sections and as well the types of improvements to be made. Those were provided to the commission as well as their traffic impact analysis report for SR two-eighty-seven was set to stay between an A and B when it terms of a level of service. I will now ask the representatives to come up and give their presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. For the record, Jennifer Ruby with Langley Properties. Address is twenty-seven thirty-eight East Guadalupe Road, Gilder, Arizona, eight-five-two-three-four. Nice to see you all. As Mari outlined, this is the first preliminary plat in the Florence two-eighty-seven PUD that y'all are very familiar with. We have been to Planning Commission twice. The first time, we were tabled or continued so that the zoning could be approved. We went back, had a really great conversation. Mari recapped most of it. We actually have added a slide to our presentation recapping some of specifically infrastructure points that came up at commission. So hopefully you will find that valuable and interesting. In addition, I just want to reiterate, you all are familiar with this process. First of all, I'm thrilled to be your first preliminary plat in front of council. It's quite an honor. But the preliminary plat includes about eleven hundred single-family detached units. You see the lotting for that. It also includes in its boundary several commercial parcels and several higher-density residential parcels. Those uses would be subject to a site plan. So this preliminary plat isn't laying out any sort of product types for those parcels. That's why they just look blank on your map. So you will see those come through as part of a separate process. But we drew the boundary in order to have the sufficient, particularly roadway network and infrastructure needed as we move through that phasing. With that, Rob, our planner, is here for any more technical, specific questions and then obviously I'll be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Rob Goops are with Hillgarth Wilson, twenty-one forty-one East Highland. I'm happy to run through the presentation if you'd like to this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, on behalf of Colmena and Langley, happy to be here this evening to be able to present the first preliminary plat for Florence two-eighty-seven. Just as a quick recap, move this out of the way so I can see. Just a quick recap in terms of the PUD. It was approved about a month and a half or so ago. Just a little under sixteen hundred acres for the planned unit development. It was built primarily on the approved general plan land use categories with suburban neighborhood, highway mixed use, and innovation district. Was approved for just over seventy-five hundred residential units in both single-family detached, single-family attached, multifamily, as well as some mixed use as an option. Overall, the density is about four point seven dwellings to acre overall for the entire PUD. Commercial and employment uses primarily along two-eighty-seven and the proposed north-south freeway and a very robust amount of public open space that we had discussed during the PUD process. So in terms of the development unit one, the preliminary plat that's pending this evening, it's highlighted in the black outline and I'll get into the specific details on the next slide. Overall, the project is about four hundred and fifty acres. And as Jenna had alluded to, that there's several different parcels that are included here, both single-family attached, single-family detached, multifamily residential, and business commerce. Those are all included within the boundary of the development unit one preliminary plat. But again, those are primarily to set the roadway network so we can have access to the single-family detached, which is the primary focus of this preliminary plat that's pending this evening. Within that, we have about three hundred and thirty acres of single-family detached. As Jen also mentioned, about eleven hundred and fifty residential lots, which equates to about a three point five dwelling to the acre. Typical lot sizes range from forty-five by one fifteens, fifty by one twenties, fifty-five by one twenties, as well as sixty-five by one twenty-fives. And the applicant does intend to move forward with the first phase on the final plat, which is anticipated to be one A, one B, two A, and two B, which is kind of in the northeast corner, just south of two-eighty-seven, west, or sorry, east of Plant Road. This is just some of the thematic elements, subdivision entry, the walls, kind of the pretty elements as you start to enter into the project, kind of set the theme for the community. Playing heavily kind of on the agrarian nature of the area, looking at trying to bring in kind of a wood feel with the what we're using is more of a sustainable material called, it's like a wood composite, as well as concrete split railing fencing. Again, playing on that agrarian feel, but again, using materials that will hold up to our harsh summers. You mentioned a hundred and ten degrees coming up pretty soon here this week. Also looking at several different materials for the walls and fences, various types of split face CMU, as well as maybe a scored or a smooth face CMU wall. Also coupled with pilasters that are stone veneer. And there's also an image there of the view fence as well, too. Just an opportunity to show a couple of the typical open space amenity areas. There will be multiples of these throughout the community. But again, this is just a typical park one, park two that I'm showing here. There will be active play areas that are covered with turf. Also looking at a robust pedestrian trail system that connects the open space to the community, the residential areas. Play structures, ping pong tables, bag toss, climbing boulders, seating tables with shade structures that will also incorporate shale structures over the play areas. And also a half-court basketball, so quite a bit of amenities there for the residents in the area. Just a real quick opportunity to show the cross-sections. We've colored these up a little bit to show kind of what we're looking at. I think we touched on a few of these during our PUD application, but in G above is the cross-section for two-eighty-seven, which is about a hundred and fifty-foot right-of-way. Three lanes in either direction with a center median that can also accommodate two left turn lanes at the intersections as needed. Bike lanes, a buffer, and then a multi-use path on one side and a sidewalk on the other. On the image to the bottom is the principal arterial for Plant Road. This is that main road that goes, kind of the main spine road that goes north to south through the community. This is a hundred and twenty-foot right-of-way. We are proposing an interim condition at this point. It'll be a two-lane road in either direction with a wider median. If and when it's needed to be widened, the third lane would come from the median and we'd shorten up the median. So as you can see here, this is the actual full development, the ultimate development on that. Just keep in mind, though, that during the interim condition, it'll be two lanes in either direction. Collector, the major collector is shown in C on the top. It's an eighty-foot collector with a raised median, through lane in either direction with a bike lane, a buffer, and then two multi-use paths on either side. Lower left corner is the minor collector. It's a sixty-foot right-of-way with direct traffic in either direction, single lanes, with a bike lane and also the opportunity for parallel parking. And that's blushing. And then also a five-foot attached sidewalk on either side. And then finally, on the far right corner is the local street cross-section. Typical local street with a lane in either direction, the opportunity for on-street parking and attached sidewalks, attached five-foot sidewalks on either side. There was a couple of questions that came up during our presentation with P and Z early on. And the first is, obviously, I want to know what the streetscape looks like along two-eighty-seven. Obviously, this is a very important intersection, important roadway, coming and going in and out of the town. And we want to make sure that we highlight that as part of this presentation. And then within the design itself, we want to make sure that we had the opportunity for quite a bit of articulation and variation in the walls and making sure that we do have a very detailed and, I think, I've usually warned once before, but robust landscaping along two-eighty-seven. And so what I've shown here is kind of the narrowest point. So just to orient you, Plant Road, which again is that major north-south roadway that comes into the community, two-eighty-seven along kind of the north here. The narrowest point of landscaping that we would have would be thirty feet. And then, as you can see, it starts to widen back where we've got a little bit more area that we can capture some retention, as well as a little bit more landscaping as well, too. There's articulation in the rear lots. Every second lot, there's a step back of a couple of feet of the wall, so we don't have a straight line along the walls. You can see at the intersection of Plant and you come into the community, we've got the opportunity for those entry monuments that I had mentioned on a previous slide, as well as as well as you can see quite a bit of landscaping along that entry feature as well to make a nice warm, comforting entrance into the community. There was a comment that was made at the P&amp;Z about the amount of turf that was at this intersection. We are looking at that, we'll modify that as part of the infrastructure and final plat A little bit further to the east along 287, as you can see, it continues to articulate. The narrowest piece here is 55 feet. We go up to 80, 89 feet, 50 feet. So again, a lot of articulation and variation in that streetscape along 287. In terms of the Phase 1 infrastructure, as identified here in 1A, it's that area that we are, we've, will be part of the first final plat. As part of the infrastructure, we'll look to continue our coordination with ADOT. We anticipate a traffic signal will be warranted at some point in the future at Plant Road and 287. Once that's warranted, then obviously we'll make sure that that is implemented. There will be a new water campus that's proposed, then won't be needed, in parcel 32. It's identified in the, with the blue star just north of 287. We'll work on that and work closely with the town. Once that's implemented and constructed, that will be, that'll serve the community as well as be connected to the town system and provide redundancy. And then we'll also be working on the sewer system that will ultimately connect to the, up north through Plant Road to the town's water reclamation facility. We do anticipate the need for a lift station at some point. That lift station will be shown, will be located just off the screen, just a little bit further west on 287. That's the low point of the project and then it'll be pumped back up and down Plant Road. So those are some of the kind of brief infrastructure improvements that will be needed for the first phase. Couple of the comments that were made at Planning and Zoning Commission, we did, obviously had presented to them twice. There was questions about the parks, trails, open space details. They had some questions about what types of materials we're using, what was going to be located underneath the ping pong table, the bag toss. Also, the use of turf. I mentioned, one, it was a little too much turf at that entrance to the community. So those are some areas that we're evaluating. I wanted to know if there was a school site that was being proposed. That school site, there is a school site that's proposed, but that's not part of the Phase 1, the development unit one plans, but we did identify that with the PUD. I mentioned some of the coordination that we've been working with ADOT, the 287 improvements. Also questions about points of access. We do have two areas, two locations that will be accessing 287 for the, for the single-family developments. Those areas, we'll anticipate having a D cell lane coming off of 287 to provide safety and safe access into the community. Mentioned the water and sewer infrastructure, there were some questions about that. There was one comment about lotting configuration. There was concern about public safety and the ability to view into some of these areas. More specifically, there was a retention basin that was kind of surrounded by some residential lots. While we were planning view fencing into that area for visibility, we're also looking at maybe modifying the configuration of those lots to make sure that we have more and better visibility into that area for public safety concerns. There were some questions about the business, commercial parcels and access to Plant and 287 for those. Those, again, as Jenna alluded to, we don't have any plans for those, but those will be site planned and we'll be working with staff to make sure that we, and ADOT, to have safe access into those parcels. There was comments about, and questions about the level of service for 287. I think as Maricel had mentioned, that those will be levels A and B. And then, questions about the number of home builders. At this point, no home builders have been identified. There was question if there would be one major, one overall home builder. At this point, we just, we can't answer that question right now. So, overall, appreciate all the questions and comments from Planning and Zoning Commission and they did obviously recommend approval of the PUD last month, or sorry, the pre-plat last month. And with that, that'll conclude my presentation. Happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you for that. I appreciate you taking the time to go through that, not only for us again, but as well as for everybody in the audience in that home. Council, do you have any questions? Council member Adam.
I don't have any questions. I have a congratulations. I think this project is probably the one of the most well-vetted projects through P&amp;Z. I know my former fellow commissioners have really asked you and done a good job of due diligence. I particularly want to call out your attention to detail on the wall and facing 287. That in plan is our gateway to Florence, right? Coming in from the south and coming in from Cas Grande and off the 10. So I love the fact that the wall is staggered, that it's curved. We're not looking at really a prison wall, right, for miles and miles. And so I would encourage you, if you're going to put extra money somewhere, the more you can do there. I also like the idea of the kind of wood and the more agrarian nature. And if there is an opportunity for a break in the wall where you could see through it, it makes a big difference visually coming into our town. We want to be very welcoming and, you know, we have walls going up all over and that is just not a welcome-to-town kind of feeling. So if there is any opportunity for that, but I think it's absolutely beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I'd like to thank you guys for the attention that you've put on this project with all the concerns from the public and you pretty much answered all the questions and crossed the Ts and dotted the Is. So thank you for all the hard work you guys have done.
Thank you.
Yes, I echo that regarding the attention to detail and the following the feedback. So thank you for being such a partner to work with on this project.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat for Florence 287 with the recommended stipulations, PC-22-46.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And item D is discussion approval disapproval to purchase 38 less lethal devices, known as tasers, from Axon Enterprises Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $186,871.47. Chief Walls.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. This item, when it was originally brought to finance, was put into the CIP. Fortunately, the town of Florence received a large grant, so I asked for the tasers to be pulled from the CIP and placed into the grant in order to go ahead and save money. Unfortunately, we found out here recently that there are stipulations for that grant and tasers cannot be formulated within that grant. So when I was before council, I talked a little bit about where we're currently at with the tasers. And I kind of mentioned that that system that we have is four generations old. We can no longer cannibalize to go ahead and keep these weapons up to date. And it's basically a system that we need to go ahead and replace right now. So we're coming back to council, putting this back before council because I no longer can go ahead and support what we currently have. And I'm asking council to go ahead and prove it's a little over 180K to provide a weapon system for the police officers to go ahead and use. You all understand that police officers need to have other forms of handling a situation other than lethal format. So again, I'm coming to council asking for approval to purchase, I believe it is, 38
Absolutely. Any questions, council? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve purchase of 38 less lethal devices as written.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, our legislative report, Mr. Jeff Graves.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. It's the 21st week of the legislative session. Both the House and Senate were adjourned last week while they await the governor's budget package. Both houses are scheduled to return tomorrow, after which we expect work on the budget to creep forward. We've heard legislators would like to be done with the budget in mid-June. However, due to the lack of progress on the budget, that's looking more and more unlikely. So we're looking at probably late June for the state budget. I did reach out to our representatives regarding the status of the governor's recommended transportation clawbacks. As a reminder, those do include study funding for the north-south corridor. They stated they intend on keeping funding for that project and others intact. And so we'll see how budget negotiations proceed and stay tuned for further updates. So kind of a slow, slow week, week and a half at the legislature. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
No, but I do want to say thank you for not only the verbal communication, but the written updates as well and putting everything out and keeping us apprised. Town manager's report is next.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Staff just wanted to go ahead and inform you that we have not forgot about two requests that council had asked after going to look at. Number one is to go ahead and move the dices down to the floor and also music on Main Street. As we originally thought this was going to be a simple process, however, it is not. So just wanted to come in to vice council. We're still looking at that. We understand the importance council wanting to go ahead and look at perhaps opening up the stage for performing arts and those kinds of things. So your staff is still working that and when we get a little closer, we'll come back and bring some information for council and direction to go ahead and move forward.
Excellent. Department head reports. Any questions from council members regarding any of the department head reports? Just wanted to say thank you for putting all the information in there and I also appreciate that for public and for us. This is our second call to the public. If anybody would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hands. If you're online, just raise that emoji. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the second call to the public and moving into call to the council. Council member Adam.
Well, I've been busy and I've been very pleased to be spending a lot of time with Ms. Sophie Dessart lately. We were honored to be presenters of awards at the Junior Rodeo. And I want to tell you, they had 60 mutton busters. So that is 60 kids, I believe under five years old, hanging on for dear life on the side of these muttons, these big bucking muttons. And it was just such a joy. And I asked the question, are these kids from ranching families? Most of them are not. So I think we are introducing a whole generation of kids to something that's very unique to Florence, right? And I'm very, hats off to Bill Foster and Kathy and the Historic Florence Foundation, I believe that's the name of their organization. Second thing I wanted to say was, I was at Penalee Partners Breakfast and it was a panel of mining representatives and Jordan Rose was there moderating. And she is a smart, funny, but smart, tough cookie. And I want to compliment our Sophie Dessart who held her own with the big guys. You're talking, the big mines were all there, very tough questions. Jordan doesn't throw any softballs. I learned you need to get with Sophie and hear the benefits to our town and what is going on out there. It is a very good news story and I was very proud to be from Florence when Sophie was up there.
Those big bucking muttons. I love that. Council member Maldonado.
I won't try to say that three times really fast. I just, on a different note, I'd like to provide my deepest condolences to the family of Officer Joshua Breeze of the Hillary PD. It's a tragedy that this happened and I hope this never happens in our home, but condolences to the family and friends.
School is out. Watch those kids on the roads. That's all I got for me.
I had a whole page typed up, but my computer decided it did not want to turn on this evening, so you all are spared. But we have a lot of great things going on in our town. I want to say thank you for everybody who's working hard to make a difference. That is all I have for this evening. With that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, all opposed? Motion carries. Have a great evening. Drive safe, everyone.